Good evening. Welcome to the July 15, 2015 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. At this time, I'd like to remind you, if you haven't already, please take your cellphones and make sure they are off or on silent. And if you would, please stand and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Applications heard during tonight's meeting will be voted on by the Planning and Zoning Commission during the meeting tonight. The Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations on these applications will then be submitted to the St. Charles County Council for their final decision on the items. The individual items or bills will be introduced at the Monday, August 10, 2015 County Council meeting. I see we have a quorum. Will someone move that we open the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The following documents are introduced as a matter of record for the public hearing and the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Unified Development Ordinance of St. Charles County, including zoning maps, and the Year 2025 Master Plan for St. Charles County, which includes the Year 2025 Future Land Use Plan map. Just to give you a roadmap for the evening, I will read each application into the record. We will then ask staff for their analysis and recommendation. At that time, the applicant, if they're in the room and wishes to do so, may come forward and explain the application and answer any questions the commission may have. After that, we will open up to the public. So if there's anybody in the room that wishes to speak on that particular application, they come forward and do so. After the public portion is over, the applicant may come back forward and address any of the issues that were brought up by the public portion and address any further concerns the council has. After that, we will discuss it openly. The council commission here will discuss it openly and we will vote on the matter. And again, too, our recommendations will go to the county council, which will be first read on Monday, August 10, 2015. The first item on the agenda this evening is the PUD zoning amendment for a portion of Jackson Estates. The application number is PUD-15-00002. The applicant, the St. Charles County Planning and Zoning Commission. The property owner, C&amp;R Realty Third LLC. The current zoning is C1/PUD Neighborhood Commercial District with Planned Unit Development Overlay District. The requested amendment changes that to an R1D/PUD Single Family Residential District with Planned Unit Development Overlay District. The area of the Jackson Estates PUD, west of Jackson Estates Platte One. There are 150 lots preliminary platted only. The property is approximately 34.3 acres in size and is located on the south side of Dietrich Road, approximately 300 feet west of Jackson Drive, and is located within Council District One. Staff?
All right, thank you. The subject property is, was PUD. You guys know the history. We are, you voted to propose to rezone this to R1D with a PUD so that it will match the area to the east that the council approved at their May meeting. Area land uses include, to the north, a church and the property is zoned A, FF Agriculture with floodway fringe overlay district. To the south is zoned R1E, single family residential. To the east is C1PUD, and that is the existing record-platted portion of Jackson Estates. And to the west is A Agricultural District. Staff is recommending approval of the zoning change to keep this in conformance with the eastern portion of the PUD. The only uses that they will not be allowed to have with this new zoning is the C2 General Commercial District, but it's already been platted and the use would remain a single family residential unless someone came forward and changed it. So staff is recommending approval. We did receive one letter from MoDOT with no comments. Questions of staff?
Any questions? All right, thank you. Is the applicant in the room?
I don't see Mr. Muskle.
That'd be us. We're the applicant.
We're the, oh, I guess, yeah. We are the applicant this time around. All right. Well, we will open this up to the public, so if there's anybody that wishes to speak on this application, please feel free to come forward and do so. And something I forgot to remind, anybody that does speak, please fill out one of these speaker cards here at the front and place it in the box just so we can have a record of your notes. All right. Can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay. Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Bruce Bande. I'm at 1919 Dietrich Road, and my property is adjacent to the subject property, separated by the width of Dietrich Road plus the Mr. and Mrs. Kaiser property that's immediately west of the subject property. So right about where the D in Dietrich Road is there, due west of where it says "subject property," that's about where my property corner's up there on Dietrich Road. I'd like to, I have a couple different points I'd like to bring out, and I'd like to present you something, if I might bring this up to you.
Will that actually, will the electronic device actually work on our?
I don't know.
Why don't you try putting it on that?
Put it on there and see if it works.
Yeah, just face up there.
This thing?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. All right.
You might find this a bit humorous, but some of you may or may not find it humorous. I've lived at the property, subject property, adjacent there for 25 years now. For 25 years, it's been very quiet and peaceful. It's a farm community, large lots, peaceful, you know, a lot of farm grounds surrounding us. We've never experienced living in subdivision-type areas like this. You might say, maybe this is kids being kids. A lot of the feeling and sentiment around this is that it's a gang symbol, tagging gang territory. 25 years, we never encountered anything like this in our area. 20 years ago, we never encountered anything like this in our area. 15, 10 years ago, we didn't. But within a year and a half of this property going in, we've got, within spitting distance of the entrance of the subdivision, and within spitting distance of the sewer treatment plant that you all are all too familiar with, we've got this. I took this on the way in tonight, and this is what I'm looking at. I'm going to request permission to take this down with use of my Remington 1100 shotgun or something, but I don't like what I'm seeing there. It was a bad plan to begin with. It was a bad plan now, always has been a bad plan, and it's totally out of place. I understand that, you know, you all are trying to remedy what was done years ago and try and, you know, get things on a better path, but a little bit of humor here, kind of tongue-in-cheek, but all this to say, I kind of see what has happened with this property over the years similar or in line with an involuntary annexation. For example, when the city of Wensville started doing corridor annexing up the property. When a city does involuntary annexation, there's an obligation that goes along with that, and that is policing and community services or city municipal services. Now, I think that in this type of situation, there's an onus or a responsibility, if we're going to turn St. Charles County into metropolitan St. Charles County, that the county and the planning and zoning and the county council has a responsibility to consider all aspects of this and not just storm, you know, roads, traffic, but, you know, policing. And so we've got some very nice neighbors that are immediately adjacent to the subject property, Mr. and Mrs. Kaiser. They're going to be inundated with kids' homes, you know, there's a lot of home, large lot homes there immediately south in big country subdivision. They're going to have people all over the place. There's going to be policing issues. There's going to be trespass issues. There's going to be disputes, and I want to know what the Planning and Zoning Committee here does, what their plans are, what they think about in terms of policing with situations like this, because we're talking about a lot of houses, a lot of people, potentially a lot of trespassing or domestic disputes or fender benders. I've been trying to get the county sheriff out there for years now to police this road. This is a low-speed road, Dietrich Road. I've got 60 to 70 mile an hour speeders going in front of my house. We don't walk on Dietrich Road anymore like we used to as a nice country lane. We don't ride bikes on Dietrich Road like we used to as a country lane because it's a death wish. I've had cars flipped on my property. I've had cars in broad daylight, dry roads spin out and end up spun around in my driveway, all kinds of craziness because of out-of-control speeding and just general disregard for what we've got there in a peaceful community. So I think that, I would like to plant a seed with the group that we've got here, that along with this type of project, that policing needs to be a consideration and county services need to be a consideration. We take care of our own trash. Municipalities do that for city residents. We take care of our own water. Municipalities do that for municipalities. We take care of our own sewer, you know. If we want cable, we call DISH, internet, et cetera. So I think that if the P&amp;Z Committee is going to start embarking on these types of things, they need to also think about community services or county services beyond just runoff and meeting EPA requirements for, you know, watershed, et cetera. That's one topic. The other is that this is a very vague application here where it says, "partial" or "preliminary plat" of 150 lots. How much of that 34.3 acres is taken up by those 150 lots? Presumably, there's going to be a lot more, many more lots in that 34.3 acres. And I understand that your, the staff is suggesting this passage. I would like to see the whole picture here because we're talking about an extremely high density against a property where homes are on 3, 5, 6, 8, 10 acres. And, you know, there had been talk before about trying to provide some green space or buffer space or increasing the lot size on that perimeter there with the adjacent subject properties where they're not inundated with these tiny postage stamp lots next to them. So is it possible to get some clarification on what this really means when it says 150 preliminary platted lots only on the subject 34 acres? Because I think that we all know that this was extremely high density, too high density for the area, and I would like to question exactly how the density calculation was done. Did it include streets? Did it include areas that should not have been included to begin with? The sewer treatment area? You know, what can and can't be included in this density calculation? So I would like to call that into question and ask that the P&amp;Z Council here review that thoroughly, review those details, and not give this developer a free hand and free ride on his density for this rezoning. That's all I got.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you. All right, we'll continue with the public portion. If there's anybody, again, that wishes to speak on this, please feel free to come forward and do so. All right, seeing none, we will close the public portion and bring it back before the commission. Questions, comments? Mr. Hammond?
The 150 lots, those are the ones down in the front, near the highway?
This, it is this area here. So it's the same 150 lots that were originally platted and approved with the PUD. The overall density of the entire PUD is actually less based on the removal of the multifamily that was in this portion of the site. So, and when the original PUD came through, it met all of the county's density requirements, calculating the density, open space, all of those items.
So this is the remaining lot on this development?
Right, yeah. Yeah, and they, well, we as staff are not proposing any change in the plan at all. If the developer wants to change the layout of the subdivision from what was originally approved, then he's going to have to come back before the commission and will notify everyone within 1,000 feet.
Any other comments? I will entertain a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Hammond, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Settley?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Ms. Polly?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 9 to 0. The next item on the agenda is conditional use permit, CUP-15-00005. The applicant is Amy Grigsby. The owner is R. Stephen and Catherine M. Barnett. The application requests a conditional use permit for a lawn care service. The property is currently zoned A agricultural district with 5-acre minimum lot size. The property is located on the south side of Highway N, approximately 530 feet east of Gallup Lane. The property is approximately 3.39 acres in size and is located within Council District Two. Staff?
All right, thank you. The subject property and all the adjacent properties are all zoned A agricultural district. Area land uses include, to the north, a single-family residence and vacant agricultural. To the south, east and west, are all single-family residences. This property, it's been zoned agricultural since 1959, and what they're proposing is a lawn care service with a 2,700-square-foot storage building and seven gravel-employed parking spaces. One thing I did want to bring up about the gravel parking spaces, the commission cannot approve the gravel parking spaces. That's their request. When they come through with their site plan and get staff approval for their site plan, Robert is the person in the ordinance that approves the gravel parking spaces. So if, just by you guys approving this, that doesn't mean they have approval of gravel parking spaces, is what I'm trying to say. Okay. The lawn care service and the Unified Development Ordinance is a service that is devoted to cutting grass on private property and public property, and they have to store all of their equipment inside a building. They are proposing to build this structure to meet that. Staff finds that the site is appropriate, being a long highway N. There's, it has good site distance at the entrance, and so staff is recommending approval. Our approval is subject to a site plan being submitted to and approved by the St. Charles County Community Development Department, indicating the entrance, parking, and location of all structures. Two, no conditional use shall be in active use until all conditions of approval have been met. Three, in any case where a conditional use is not in place and in active use within two years from the date of granting and/or in accordance with the terms of the conditional use originally granted or subsequently amended, then without further action by the Planning and Zoning Commission and/or the county council, the conditional use or authorization thereof shall be null and void. We did receive one letter from MoDOT, and they had no comments. Any questions of staff? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant in the room?
Yes.
Want to come forward? Can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
Yes.
Okay. Can you state your names and addresses for our record, please?
My name is Amy Grigsby, and it's number 2 Heavenly Valley, O'Fallon, Missouri, 63368.
And Steve Barnett, 2500 Curtis Lane, in Lake St. Louis, Missouri.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Do you want to say?
Yeah. We just were planning to do a Morton Building, 42 by 50, with a 12 by 50 lean-to, in order to just house our two trucks and trailers and a tractor and a skid steer, basically. Not a large company. I've owned that ground for about eight, nine years now, and we just wanted to start utilizing that, you know, that area if we could, so.
Any questions to the applicant? Gary?
Do you operate a lawn service now?
Yes, sir.
But not in this location?
No, sir.
What are your hours going to be at this location as far as traffic coming in? Do you start like at 6:00 a.m. and knockoff at 5:00?
Usually 7:00 to 3:30.
And that's Monday through Sunday?
No, just Monday through Friday, occasional Saturdays.
Are you going to have any lights, commercial lights, lighting buildings?
No, I don't think so.
Anyone staying on the property?
Yes. We own it. My son just came back from the Air Force. He's going to be moving into the home.
Staying on the property?
Yeah. We'll probably put like your typical dusted on, you know, in front of the barn that comes on with the sensor, but I won't be putting in like light poles and stuff like that.
Thank you.
Mr. Hammond?
I'm a little confused. Barnett, you're the owner and Mrs. Grigsby?
Grigsby. I work for the owner.
She's my office manager.
I do all the paperwork, and that's why I'm here. So I can give you anything you want, but answer all the questions.
So in other words, you're the one that actually knows everything.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah. Exactly.
Go ahead, Mr. Ellis.
Do you do any wintertime work, moving the snow?
I do, I do snow removal, but, you know, all my equipment stays on the properties that we do. Well, except for the two, you know, we got probably three trucks that do snow, and I got a couple tractors, but we put the tractors on those properties for the winter.
Okay, because in the staff's report, this would prohibit the storage of equipment and materials not used in the lawn care service on-site, so.
Yeah, we have, we as staff have kind of adopted the fact that all the lawn care services do do snow removal in the winter, so as long as everything is stored inside a building, we're okay with that.
Okay.
Any other questions to the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will now open this up to the public, so if there's anybody that wishes to speak on this particular application, please feel free to come forward and do so. Seeing none, we will close the public portion and bring it back before the commission.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Can I have a second?
Mr. Settley, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Ms. Polly?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
All right. Motion is approved, 9 to 0. Next item on the agenda is another conditional use permit. Application CUP-15-00006. The applicant is Jason Hooper. Property owner is Robert Chatrov, Chatrov, excuse me. The application requests a conditional use permit for a nursery and lawn care service. Property is currently zoned A agricultural district with a 5-acre minimum lot size and is located on the east side of Hopewell Road, approximately 675 feet north of Deer Road. The property is approximately 2.72 acres in size and is located within Council District Two. Staff?
All right, thank you. The subject property and the adjacent properties are all zoned A agricultural district. Land uses in the area include, to the north, vacant residential property. To the south is single-family residence. To the east is a single-family residence, a vacant agricultural. And to the west is single-family residence, an agricultural farm, and a telecommunications Staff is, oh, I'm sorry, they intend to do a lawn care service and a nursery at this location. There'll be a building, once again, gravel parking, and the nursery bins north of the structure on the site. Staff has reviewed the site relative to the criteria for the conditional use permit for the nursery and the lawn care service, and this is just probably a mile or so from the one we had last month for Mr. Chatrov on Hopewell Road. So staff is recommending approval. Having the nursery on the site, it does allow them to do some outdoor storage with the residences around the site and the existing vegetation. We're putting conditions on that the uses be set back 40 feet from the side and 50 feet from the rear property lines, the regular agricultural setbacks, and that that vegetation remain undisturbed, so we have that natural buffer to the adjacent properties. So we are recommending approval, subject to a site plan being submitted to and approved by the St. Charles County Community Development Department, indicating the entrance, parking, and location of all structures. There should be no grading or removal of existing vegetation within 20 feet of the side and rear property limits. The structure parking and all bins for storing materials must be set back 40 feet from the side and 50 feet from the rear property lines. Three, no conditional use shall be in active use until all conditions of the approval have been met. Four, in any case where a conditional use is not in place and in active use within two years from the date of granting and/or in accordance with the terms of the conditional use originally granted or subsequently amended, then without further action by the Planning and Zoning Commission and/or the county council, the conditional use or authorization thereof shall be null and void. And there were no letters. Any questions of staff? Yeah, Gary?
Is this going to be a wholesale nursery business, or is it going to be retail nursery business?
I do not know. We'll have to ask the applicant then.
Any questions of staff that she can answer? All right, thank you. Is the applicant in the room? Can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
Yes.
Okay. Can you state your names and addresses for our record, please?
Yeah, I'm Jason Hooper, 32 Royal Astmac Court, 63304.
Josh Hooper, 255 England Drive, O'Fallon, 63366.
All right, go ahead.
So our intentions are, we currently have a contract on the, to purchase the piece of property from Rob Chatrov, and we'd like to, upon purchase, put a building to work out of, a pole barn style building, I think 40 by 60 is what I had put on the drawing, and that would be to store our lawn equipment, which lawn mowers, trimmers, blowers, wheelbarrows, that kind of stuff. As far as the nursery aspect of it, I included nursery. We actually won't do any selling from the property. That would be more for any landscaping jobs that we have currently going on or in the future. We'll sometimes have extra trees, shrubs, where the nursery part of it would be just to plant them on the property, keep them alive until we do our landscape job, which may be next month or a few months down the road. So that's why I included the nursery part, just looking ahead that there would be, you know, trees or shrubs planted out in front of our building to, you know, keep alive until the job.
Any questions to the applicant?
Yes, sir.
How many employees do you have?
We currently have us two and 11 other people on payroll.
And same question I asked prior to the other one, what are your hours going to be?
Pretty similar. We meet at the shop at 7:00 a.m., and between the hours of 5:00 and 6:00 p.m. is usually when we unload. Saturdays are only in spring and fall, and it's usually every other Saturday, which Saturdays are half-days, 8:00 a.m. to noon or 1:00, and we're done.
And you'll probably also be doing snow removal?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and same situation, which Jan stated. We have four snow plows and salt spreader units that we would actually store inside of the building when they're not on our trucks.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will now open this up to the public, so if there's anybody else in the room that wishes to speak on this particular application, please feel free to come forward and do so. All right, seeing none, we will bring it back before the commission.
Make a motion.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Griffin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Ms. Polly?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
And Mr. Settleey?
Yes.
All right. Application is approved, 9 to 0. All right, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from last month. We've all had a chance to take a look. Any changes, suggestions, comments? If none, I will, there's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, there is one more announcement before we end. This will be my last meeting. My family and I are moving to Columbia, closer to work for me and closer to family for my in-laws, so this will be, as of August 1st, I will no longer be a resident of St. Charles County, therefore I cannot serve on the St. Charles County Planning and Zoning Commission, so.
So are we.
Yeah, it's been a pleasure and an honor serving with you for the past six years. I looked back over my notes, and August of 2008 was my very first meeting, so six years, but it's been a pleasure, and I wish you all the best.
I might add, just it's been a pleasure working with you, and thank you for your leadership. You've done a tremendous job.
You've made it easy.
And before everybody scrambles out, Gail brought a camera so he can get a picture of all of us before you depart.
No, Gary wouldn't be without his camera.
Oh, no.
I'd have to talk to my agent first to see what the property rates are.
The release, the release notes.
All right, any other business before the commission, before we adjourn?
No.
All right, I will entertain a moment to, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
All in favor, sign aye.
Aye.
Aye.